Everyone, I would hit the gavel, but there is no gavel to hit. So I welcome you all to the November 30th, 2023 special meeting of the City Council of Half Moon Bay. May I have a roll call, please?
Yes. Councilmember Reddick?
Here.
Councilmember Rorback?
Here.
Councilmember Brownstone?
Here.
Vice Mayor Jimenez?
Here.
And Mayor Penrose?
Here.
All council members are present.
Thank you. We can rise for a salute to the flag, pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We will start tonight's meeting with our discussion of a possible ordinance to raise the minimum wage in the city of Half Moon Bay.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. As you know, I'm Lisa Rossi, the Administrative Services Director, and I'm here tonight with Brian Lopez, our Senior Management Analyst. And we have prepared a PowerPoint to share some information that we've come across on our research and to kick off the discussion. So with your permission, I'll go ahead and start. Thank you. So just to give some background, in terms of what is going...
Oh, it's just the one screen.
Luckily, Brian is also IT, so...
Yes.
Two for one.
Sorry, I was like, if that is, it's up here, but...
Thank you, Brian. So to start off tonight, we wanted to just give an indication of what's been going on, not only locally, but also with federal and state minimum wage increases. So as you all may know, the federal government has passed the Raise... Sorry, Raise the Wage Act 2023, and the intent of this is to raise the minimum wage to $17 an hour by 2028. In the state of California, we're a bit more active. The minimum wage will actually go up to $16 an hour on January 1st. And they have presently done two special bills to tackle two specific industries in California, the first being the minimum wa... fast food, I'm sorry, the fast food workers. This also includes all fast food workers who work for a franchise which is determined as a business that has 60 or more businesses attached to it. And that will be $20 an hour as of April 1st next year. And healthcare workers will also see an increase. They're hoping to get to $25 an hour by 2028 for healthcare workers throughout California. Here in Half Moon Bay, our minimum wage will be $17.01 per hour on January 1st, according to the ordinance that we passed in 2020.
On the screen, we do have a breakdown of the wages, the minimum wage ordinances as they currently stand in the Greater Bay Area. And on it, you'll see both the 2023 minimum wage as well as the 2024 upcoming wage and where Half Moon Bay will be sitting in relation to that.
And to give you some indication of the outreach that we did in preparing for this meeting tonight, we actually did touch base with some local businesses, but a lot of our information came from the Chamber of Commerce survey that was done recently. And we had some of those statistics in the staff report. We also reached out to commercial landlords, as in August, there was some discussion among council about getting them involved in finding solutions for the businesses who have said that they would be struggling if the minimum wage increase went out. And we, of course, have reached out to different employees at different businesses. I actually, off the research cycle, would just touch base with certain employees when I was in specific businesses, just to see how they felt, if they knew about the increases. And then, of course, other invested parties, including nonprofits, we've had conversations. And this is just very preliminary outreach. We intend to do more dependent... we will do more after the outcome of this meeting.
So we wanted to show you all a few options for ordinances. This is based on research with other cities and kind of what is typical for these types of ordinances. And so before you, several options are, one would be increasing wages over time. Depending on the city, it can be, you know, a year, six months, several years. It just, it depends on kind of what they had decided. And of course, this is an option that we can do as well. One of the benefits, of course, is that it allows businesses to better plan and absorb employee expense increases and if they need to pass on some of those expenses to consumers, et cetera. Another option would be to differentiate small and large businesses. This is a pretty common one, where smaller businesses would have a slightly slower hill to climb when it comes to increasing their minimum wage and can help alleviate some of those expense burdens over time. Let's see, the next one, of course, would be implementing a CPI cap. And there's kind of two options on this particular one, where it allows businesses to better plan for expenses and helps protect them against high inflationary years. An example would be 2022, where it was greater than 5%. And then another one is a carryover provision with the CPI cap, which ensures that there's no erosion of wages over time while still allowing businesses to better plan. And of course, the final one is enacting a minimum wage immediately or within any legal requirements. And of course, that brings workers closer to a living wage sooner. And historically, Half Moon Bay has conducted their initial wage increase one year within, and then annual increases 60 days after the notification on November 1st. And that's it. Questions?
Thank you. Are there any clarifying questions from council? Seeing none, we'll go to public forum.
Thank you very much. Crystal Lynn Geet, the CEO of the Coastside Chamber of Commerce, speaking on behalf of the businesses that were unable to make it today. And I sent this all via email, however late. I only sent it at 4 o'clock, apologies. But I just wanted to say for the record, first of all, thank you so much for having a work session. We do really truly appreciate how the council works really hard to take in information from all sides to make a decision on how they're going to move forward. That's really appreciated. A lot of councils don't do that. And then, as mentioned before, we did a survey back in August, when this conversation kind of started to pop up. And we had 23 Half Moon Bay businesses reply to that survey, which, for a local survey, is pretty freaking good. Usually, like, five is a really good accomplishment. So that's just an indication of how people really wanted to engage in this conversation. And some of the larger takeaways were that the businesses didn't have a single employer mention that they don't want a living wage, that they are working really hard to get to that. However, they do have to increase all of their other expenses or revenues to increase. And so those that could afford to do it, a lot of, you know, the financials, the lawyers, a lot of the service-based businesses are already paying well above $19 an hour. They tend to start closer to 23 or 25. And we actually have some realit... realit... retailers, retailers on Main Street that do start their entry-level associates at $23 because they do well and they can afford it. So it's not unheard of, but it is not the average. So the businesses that can't afford it say that the first thing that'll happen is it'll price them out of hiring entry level, that for $19 or above, they've got to get a certain amount of work out of that person, whether that's their bookkeeping, inventory management, managing of other employees, that they'll have to get more for that dollar, or $2 in this case. And so first and foremost, that does price out school kids and seniors in a lot of places. And so although they're not the target audience for this, it is something to consider because our school kids already have a hard time getting into the workforce, and this is going to make it harder. And the next thing is that, to consider that to increase the minimum wage also increases how much that we're going to owe in California employment taxes and other insurances and workers' comp. So a $2 increase is actually closer to a $5 increase per hour per employee, and that there's a catch-22 effect. This is meant to help people pay for the cost of living. However, for every employer that has to deal with this and who can't absorb it on their own, is going to increase their cost, which is going to increase the cost of living because that $18 burrito just became a $20 burrito, and our locals already don't spend money here. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris Lynn. Next, we have Rabbi Muscha.
Good evening, and thank you for having us here. I had prepared to speak in one minute, so now knowing I have a little more time, I won't rush through. I represent the Coastside Jewish community, although tonight I am just speaking before you as a local faith leader. If there's a single common theme that our faith community share in common, it's a commitment to social justice. Our scriptures teach us to help the widow, to extend her hands to the downtrodden, and as we read in Proverbs 31, "to speak up, judge righteously, champion the poor and the needy." In practical terms, that means, at the very least, that we should support a just minimum wage, a wage that will enable working people to support themselves and their families. Partly because of the latest economic downturn, more low-wage earners today are older and better educated than ever. In addition, more of these, those earning the minimum wage are people supporting their families, not teens earning money for movie tickets. Yet, much of the business sector and its allies continue to stymie our attempts to lift minimum wage workers out of poverty. In a weak economy with many unemployed companies, often use their bargaining power to cut wages, benefits, and hours. The consuming public also plays a role. Too often, we fail to make the link between low prices and widespread poverty. If we are to provide a measure of justice where it counts to the least well-paid among us, we must support an increase in the minimum wage. We need to talk about it with our friends, families, and neighbors, and partner with others to ensure that it happens. And it's the right thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Joanne Rokowski.
Good evening. It's a pleasure to be able to be here with you tonight, and thank you for the opportunity. I'm here to speak in favor of increase, in support of increasing the minimum wage to $19 an hour. And I do so thinking of all the lower, very low-income workers who contribute to the quality of life in our community by working in local restaurants and stores and so many other low-income service jobs. Their work is not easy, yet many, many struggle to make rent and afford food and basic necessities despite living in one of the richest counties in the United States. Now, some may say that this increase is too much. I'd argue it's perhaps not enough. Example, I was looking at the income tables for San Mateo County for 2023, and at the $17.01 per hour income, an individual working full-time for 52 weeks a year, and we know that many people do not get full-time work in their current jobs, but if they did, they would make $35,380 annually. So looking at the table, this puts them in the extremely low-income category. Now, if the minimum wage is increased to $19 an hour, the annual income, again, full-time, no vacation, no paid sick leave, would be $39,150. That individual would move just past extremely low income to the very low-income category. So in contrast, the average rent for a one-bedroom apartment in San Mateo County is over $2,700 a month. So to afford that apartment at a 30% base, which is the accepted standard, to stay within 30% of income, an individual would need an annual income of $94,545. We're nowhere near that, and that's why I'm supporting the move to 19 at this point. I just wish it could be more, but I applaud you for considering 19. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Joanne. Do we have anyone online for public forum? I'm seeing none. Okay. Before I turn it back over to council, because this is an item that's dear to my heart and that I actually wanted to have agendized, I'm going to take the time to make a little speech. I'm going to read out some things that I wrote down a little bit earlier. At every council meeting that I can recall since I've been mayor, two women have shown up with their family to describe the extreme difficulties that they undergo trying to support themselves and their families here in our beautiful idyllic Half Moon Bay. They do not complain, they explain. They are not looking for a handout. They are proud of the hard work that they do to try and survive here. They are my neighbors, they are your neighbors. They pay taxes, and they support our local schools and our shops. In San Mateo County, the cost of living is 84% higher than the national average. In Half Moon Bay, it is 170% of the national average, 1.7 times the national average. The cost of living for a single adult is $55.39 before taxes. That's $27 an hour. That's base low-income living wage. The cost of living for two working adults with two children is $112,903, which is $28 an hour for each of the adults working. According to bestplaces.net, to live comfortably in Half Moon Bay, California, a minimal annual income of $282,242 for a family and $106,400 for a single person is recommended. That's equal to $70 an hour. The Center for Economic and Policy Research published in January 2020 that a minimum wage of $21.50 an hour, this is in 2020, would mean that a full-time, full-year minimum wage worker would be earning $43,000 a year. We have heard and will continue to hear from those better off than our low and extremely low-income constituents, that raising the minimum wage will put our employers out of business. The Goldman School of Public Policy found that a 10% increase in minimum wage led to a 0.36% increase in food costs. It didn't put anybody out of business. The W.E. Upjohn Institute for Employment Research found that minimum wage increases will not lead to increased prices, but may actually decrease prices. The Center for American Progress stated there remains no evidence that wage increases are causing increases in inflation. Question, does raising the minimum wage cause unemployment? "A minimum wage increase doesn't kill jobs," said Reich, Chair of UC Berkeley's Center on Wage and Employment Dynamics. "It kills job vacancies, not jobs. The higher wage makes it easier to recruit workers and retain them. Turnover rates go down. Other research shows that those workers are likely to be a little more productive as well." When employers hear that minimum wages are going up, Reich explained, "They tend to imagine the impact only on their own businesses. They wonder how they can absorb higher costs without cutting staff or losing profit." I say to them, "Look, your industry will respond very differently compared to what your individual firm can do," Reich added. "If everyone in the industry faces the same shocks and costs, not just you, then the market response might be a modest price increase." Indeed, already some restaurants pass on the higher cost to consumers, and the small price increases are not enough to drive consumers away," Reich said. The owners benefit because higher wages means less turnover as well as less advertising and training for new workers. In the end, the profits are not harmed. The net effect, Reich said, "is a transfer of income from consumers who are able to pay a bit more to the workers." And now I'll turn it back over to council. Councilmember Rorback?
I support a $20 an hour minimum wage effective as soon as we can get it, an ordinance to that effect. That would match what the fast food workers in California will get starting in April. And I think we've all heard all the reasons why. It's a question of economic justice that we do this as soon as possible. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Jimenez?
I'm sorry, I'm still trying to, not to laugh about why you research, about how much actually a person needs to make, you know, their income, you know, to be in Half Moon Bay. I mean, that's unheard of, you know, $200,000. Farm workers make $25,000 a year. Even with $19, you know, I was doing the math, you know, it's just $36,000. With $20, it's still barely not even $40,000 a year. That's way below, you know, poverty levels in San Mateo County. And the thing, that's for a single person, but when we talk about having, you know, families, you know, the two ladies that you mentioned that are here, you know, they actually, one of them, you know, is a family of five. The family makes less than $50,000 a year. You know, she, one of the, she shared with me, 2022, you know, actually made $35,000, you know, it's a family of five. That's kind of, you know, give you an idea of what we have, you know, in Harvey, thank you, you know. First, we were proposing to do $19 an hour, you know, but I'm going to have to second Harvey, you know, going for the $20 an hour. You know, I mean, we, if we know how our families are struggling, you know, the living situation of our families, you know, there's research and, you know, and it's proved that, you know, that raising the minimum wage does not affect our economy, actually benefits our economy, you know, why not? You know, the question is, why not? I remember last, I was not here yet, you know, we talked about raising minimum wage, I believe it was 20... Was it 2020? It was one of the, one of the nurseries saying, you know, when we actually were talking about raising to a, to a 1350, I think it was, we were, it was, or 15, we were talking about it, and oh, we're gonna, we're gonna have to move, you know, and I made a comment, you know, I was over there and not here, and they're still here. You know, the minimum wage went up, and they're still here. You know, actually, they, they hire more than 100 people, so they did not go out of business. You know, so that's actually prove, you know, that raising minimum wage benefits our community. Half Moon Bay is expensive to live. But our service workers, you know, farm workers, service workers, restaurants, hotels, you know, retail, you know, they are the ones that make our economy move, you know. I had asked, you know, previous city manager, Bob, you know, a while back, to give me some information about, you know, how much revenue is created by our service workers. You know, I was never able to see that, those numbers, but as I understand it, it's a lot. You know, Half Moon Bay, you know, survives on that, and our service workers play a big part. The local restaurants, you know, our service industry, and our retails, you know, farming. During the pandemic, you know, our economy was affected, San Mateo County economy affected, you know, the, you know, our agriculture, $50 million, $50 million, because we lost a lot of farm workers, farm workers that had to move out of the area. And that was, you know, so that's actually proved that when we have, we offer better wages, we don't, we don't lose our workers, and we can actually survive, our economy would not be affected. You know, then we have, we have to be able to, you know, Rabbi, you know, perfect example, you know, what you said, we have to be able to be there for those who need us, you know, to lend a hand, you know, to other ones that actually need. This is just a thing, that's a really very simple step, to raise, you know, minimum wage. If McDonald's, Burger King, you know, fast food restaurants, they're, they're going to be able to pay $20 an hour? I think we, I think we can do that. I mean, I wish we could do a little bit better, you know, because we know the struggle, but it's something to think about. You know, I remember saying, well, if you're going to pay your, your employees a little bit more, it is going to keep you from taking one less vacation a year? You worry about not taking a vacation. Your workers are worried about paying the bills. Something to think about. So I support that. Let's afford $20 to 20.
Thank you.
I remember Joaquin, you're right, I remember back in 2020, so we raised it from, was it 1350 to 15? We did it in two stages. Sounds like a 10% increase. Sounds like a 10% increase. And I do remember a particularly large nursery saying that they would go out of business. I also remember about six months later, there's a huge spread in the, one of those nice magazine sections from the review that they used to put together, all about that nursery, you know, they were investing, there's about 15 pages in there, all the investing they were doing in that nursery. So they clearly weren't going broke. Neither were at least three or four restaurants that had pretty vocal advocates saying they would have to give up the business. But they're all still in business. you know, when you, when you said we surveyed all the businesses and everybody agrees that people should have a livable wage, then we hear that, you know, these current wages up to $17 an hour is extremely low income. So I get a little confused with that. How can everyone agree that we should have a livable wage? And then say it's okay to have the most extremely low income? Now, in terms of the fast-food workers, there are some different economies going on there. So, you know, those are usually very large. Fast-food workers typically work in larger companies that can absorb those increases differently. And in terms of passing it off to the consumer, you know, if it's an extra 20 cents for a burger at a fast-food restaurant, most consumers aren't gonna be too disturbed about that. So I'm just saying, I'm taking it all in, because there are differences, you know, and who can absorb and who can't absorb certain costs. So we're in the same situation back in 2020 at 1350 an hour. And here we are at 17 an hour as of January. So if we increase that 10%, that would bring it pretty close to 19 an hour. So I'm going to think about maybe a two-stage piece to get up to the 20. But if there's, I mean, that's what I'm thinking. Let's get it up to 19 quickly, which would be a 10% increase like we did in 2020. And then maybe six months later, bring it up to 20. If it feels like too much for people to take the 20 right off the bat, which still puts us at the higher end of the averages of all the cities that we have. So I'm just, I'm just saying a little wiggle room, but I wouldn't do anything less than 19 an hour, which is still very low income. And people are making choices between having enough food and paying rent. And God help them if they get sick or child gets sick or car breaks down. that is what I would consider a barely livable wage.
Thank you. Counselmember Vedic.
I would support $20 an hour for larger businesses, like right out of the gate. Like if fast-food corporations are gonna be spending, you know, $20 an hour, I think, you know, businesses like Safeway or, you know, if you have 20 or 25 or 26 employees, it's easier to absorb. And then I would put a path of, you know, for small businesses to migrate to that, but not like right away. You know, maybe you go to 19, or maybe you go to 1850, and the next year you go to 19 and 20. So I think 20 is a good target, I think, for bigger businesses right away. But I would give smaller businesses, like our Main Street businesses that might have only like five or six employees, give them a pathway to adjust. And I'm not set in any term or period. But I think we need to recognize that, as Robert has, that there are, you know, different, you know, abilities depending on your size to absorb the costs. But I think it's a good goal. I pay my house cleaner almost $30 an hour, you know, so, and deservedly so, I think. And I'm on record, you know, running for election, that I think $25 makes sense. So, but I am cognizant that we have many small businesses, especially in the downtown area, and they're, you know, small independent businesses that maybe work out of their homes, that, you know, a little bit of a buffer to adjust to that, you know, would make sense for them. So that's where I'm coming down, is, you know. One set of rules for the big businesses like Safeway, et cetera, and then something else for smaller businesses. But to get there.
Okay, thank you.
Quick clarification, question?
Yeah.
Sure.
Where would you place farm, farm workers in that? Because they would, whatever we decide on, that would be the wage for farm workers, right? So in terms of Half Moon Bay, how would you place that?
So what's the size of the business? You know, it's a big nursery, you know, like the one that up the road in Frenchman's Creek there, you know, that brings employees in from Monterey County. They're quite large, they have operations in Monterey County and San Bernito County and San Mateo County. I would think that they could absorb it, you know. So, you know, if it's just a small organic farmer that has like five employees, you know, it's gonna be harder to do, because they don't have, you know, the big margin that a bigger nursery, a commercial nursery might have. So I mean, it's something to have staff look at. I know that when we raised it, you know, back in 2020, I heard from Farm Bureau, "Do not do this," you know. So I'm very sensitive, because I know that like horticulture, for instance, they're on a very slim margin. They compete with Ecuador and other places. And there's not a lot of room there. And you can go and see their facilities, you know, they're not investing in a lot of green, upgrading their greenhouses or anything. So I think more research needs to be done by staff about, you know, what's the size of our business landscape here? What does it look like in terms of ability? So I'm not disputing the target. I'm just saying, can we help people get there?
I'd like to make a couple comments. One is that the figure of $19 an hour came up out of the blue. It was, it was $19 because at that time of that council meeting, there was a discussion that it was, took $38 an hour to have a living wage in San Mateo County. And therefore, half of that would be $19 an hour. So it's an arbitrary figure to begin with. I am definitely in favor of a minimum of 20. And I, if it were up to me, it would be 40 an hour. But it's not up to me, it's up to the council, and it's up to the constituents, and it's up to the business community, and the faith community, and all of us to make a decision. So I am in favor of $20 an hour. I wouldn't mind a two-year step process. I don't want to go any longer than two years. And then the other thing I'd like to say about the survey that the chamber did, and thank you, chamber, for doing this. This, this is the kind of information that we need. But if I look at the responses, the effects of a $19-an-hour minimum wage raise, 11 out of the 23 responses said, "We'll pass the increase on to consumers and clients," which is just what the research has shown me today. That if it's gonna cost me another 50 cents for a hamburger, or $2 for a drink, or whatever, I'm willing to pay that, because I'm one of the fortunate that can afford it. Six people said, "My business would likely close." I don't get it. Five, at the same time, said, "No known impact." Period. And only one said, "I'll move to an area with a lower wage." So there are always gonna be naysayers, but these figures do not tell me that the business community is up in arms about a raise in the minimum wage. I too would like to have a little bit more information about the size of our businesses. That was one of the discussions I had a little earlier with Kristalyn. We don't really know. We, we have some guesses, but we don't need guesswork. We need to know.
We have those figures from our business license registration, and we have them available tonight. We anticipated this.
Okay, great. Can we hear those figures then?
So this, sorry, this is from HDL, who actually, we contract with to do our business licenses. So we have 591 businesses that have zero to five employees. We have, well, one to five, 416, so that's the same number. Six to 10 employees, we have 51 businesses. 11 to 24 employees, we have 38. Businesses that have one to 25 employees, there are 507 total. And then the 26 to 50 employees, we have 15 businesses. 51 to 99 employees, we have three. And 100-plus employees, we have two. And this is all within the city limits.
Yeah, is there a way, I know you have that in an email. Is there a way we can pop it up on the screen? Yeah. Sorry, this information came in this afternoon, so.
When we talk about employees, are we talking about full-time employees? Are we talking about part-time?
I believe we're talking about both. And then there, there are some businesses within the Half Moon Bay city limits that have zero, just the owner-operated type business. So, is this connected to the plot?
And this is just a workshop, too, so we could have another.
Yes. Is that SharePoint?
While we're waiting, could you go back to that Brock Purdy article?
Is there a way I can, oh, I can project it. I'm sorry. It's been a while since I've been up here. Let's see. I'm nervous and I can't find it. Okay, how do I, help me, help me. Where is it? Oh, wait.
While they're pulling that up, I had heard some questions about full-time versus part-time. It's our understanding, and we can research it further, but I don't think we can differentiate the wages between a full-time worker versus a part-time worker.
No, I'm not talking about the wages. What I want to know is how many employees. If somebody has five part-time employees, and they're hiring them for two or three hours a day, three days a week.
It's not coming up.
Very different than a full-time worker. I don't, so that's something we can look at. I don't know how readily available that information is. This information was easy, because when people fill out their business license registration each year, they have to indicate how many employees they have, but it does not ask part-time versus full-time. Certainly something we should look at for future, maybe, updates to that, because how hard would that be to collect that information in the future?
Sorry, I wasn't on the right network.
Could we also, I don't know if you have a number, but how many, if we pass this in Half Moon Bay, how many approximate number of farm workers would that impact?
That I don't have offhand, but a lot of the farms themselves are outside city limits. So someone like the large nursery that was being spoken of, they would definitely be impacted. And I do have a list of the businesses, so I can get back to you with specific types of businesses. I just didn't, unfortunately, because we got the information, so I wasn't able to break it into industry.
I'd like that information to come in by gesture.
And I'm sorry, we're having a. And I do have the information, so just pulling it together in a, in a way that's easy to read.
Can, can we, it seems like this isn't working tonight. So can you give the numbers again, but just the totals? 25 and over?
Okay.
25 and less, or 25 and less, and then over 25? Is that how it breaks out? So 26 and up, instead of breaking it into smaller categories?
That one. Okay. So the zero to 25 employees, zero to 25, we have 682 businesses. And then 26 to 50 employees, we have 15 businesses. 51 to 99, we have three. And then 100-plus employees, we have two.
So what's the total of over 25?
20.
20.
20, 20 businesses of over 25, I apologize.
It sounds like we're gonna need to bring back some more information. So one of the things we'll calculate is how many employees that actually represents within each of those categories. It sounds like farm workers. If we can determine how many of those are farm workers, that's the category you're interested in knowing about? Any other groups that you'd be interested in knowing more about?
It'd be nice to know, like, take Main Street, or, you know, our commercial downtown core. What's the, you know, the average size of the business there? What's the breakdown for downtown? You know, because, you know, we are proceeding with a plan to reinvigorate downtown. We want to be careful in our policymaking that we're not, you know, fighting our two initiatives, creating conflicts there. So I'd like to understand, you know, the downtown landscape. Yeah.
And Matthew, so we may not be able to break it down into specific classifications like farm worker, but what we can do is break it down by industry. So it would be.
Like retail, like downtown.
Exactly, and nurseries, retail. We actually, and by, I can actually do it by geographical location, because I have addresses listed.
That'd be nice to know.
Actually, one thing I'm actually worried about, it's not everybody in Half Moon Bay receiving the benefit of the minimum wage. You know, if we're gonna offer minimum wage, I think it should be across the board, you know.
I think we're talking about that, we're just talking about the timing for a certain.
Yeah, but I know, we're talking about, you know, how many employees actually, you know, to, you know, per, you know, per business. Right? So yes, to be, to be, to be clear, we're talking about everybody will receive a minimum wage across the board. Doesn't really matter if they only have one employee, correct?
That. I get your point. So we're not disputing where we're going. We're just, there may be businesses that, you know, need, like Deborah said, two-years maximum, you know, pathway to adjust.
But I think two years is a long time to go from, you know, to go from 17, you know, 10% to 19, and then we do two years, you know, to 20, that's.
Well, I was thinking. You might be thinking about something like, one year, for the first year, we are talking about all businesses that have more than 10 employees immediately go to $20 an hour.
That's what I was.
The following year, all businesses go to $20 an hour.
I think that's what you and I were talking about.
Yeah. I don't, I don't think we were talking about discriminating because of sizes, but we do need to know that.
We want to understand the impact, that's all.
So so this will be for 2024. We'll go to 19, and 2025, we'll go for.
No, 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 no. 20.
20.
20 for businesses over 10 or whatever amount. And then the next year, everybody, you know, we need, some people need a migration pathway to adjust and absorb.
The same thing we did during 2020, that it was six months.
That was different.
No, that was different. We did increasing amounts over time. We're talking about the same amount. We're talking about different constituents having to pay that amount, depending on the size of the business.
Everybody will pay it, but some will pay sooner.
This is the approach the state took when they, in 2016, when they implemented the new minimum wage. They broke it up, 20, over 25 and under 25, and they were a dollar apart until, I think, this year. 20, in 2023 is when they both equalized, and going forward, they're the same. And it was the same rationale, that smaller businesses just got a little more time to work out the details.
How long did it take that? How long was that?
They did that over, what, a seven-year period, something like that?
Seven-year period.
Yeah, that was a little longer. A lot of cities usually do it over a shorter period of time. And so for a lot of the cities that we did research on, you know, they would do it over, you know, they would like do increments every maybe six months or every year. Being that we're going to 1701 on January 1st. Being that we're going to 1701 on January 1st, under our current ordinance, you know, then it would make sense to do, you know, maybe something either in June or January of the following year. And then, and then another increment down the road. Or for the differentiation, when you have the small and large business, oftentimes they're trailing by maybe 50 cents or a dollar over the large businesses. And then, and then there is a point, usually a year or two, three years down the road, where they both equalize and they'll be the exact same wage and then carry that same wage going forward, oftentimes based on the CPI.
We can also make it effective immediately.
Yes.
Once we have the ordinance in hand, we can make it effective immediately. We don't have to wait till June or January.
Yes.
With one clarification. Ordinances do have a 30-day waiting period before they become effective. So there's a first reading, a second reading, and then a 30-day period before it makes as legal matter.
I, I would just say, once we have clear direction from the council on exactly what we want to do, we're probably looking at 60 to 90 days before it would actually take effect. So just, I think that's important for you to consider as we move forward. Also, Madam Mayor, we do have another member of the public, based on what she's heard, that would like to comment, wanted to give.
Okay, can I just make one point real quick?
We have a couple more comments to make and then we can hear from the person.
I don't like the idea of, you know, the six-month increments just because I think it's harder for small businesses to adjust their systems, their payroll, their inventory, whatever it is they have to adjust to accommodate, you know, the, the new rates. So I think we're talking, for me, I would say a year as opposed to six-month adjustments. I think it just is harder to plan for and to, you know, implement. I might be wrong about that. Chris Lynn can tell me, but.
The other thing that I'd like to see us consider is the increase, annual increase tied to the CPI. And also with the idea that if the CPI is very high one year, that we can equalize it over the next year or two. So I like, I like the idea of making it easier for people to adjust.
Sure, yeah, with the, to answer or to, to address what you're saying. What I've seen through the research is usually either three, 3.5 or 5% for a CPI cap. And I'm actually surprised myself, but it's actually rarer to have the carryover provision. But the big advantage with that is that it does preserve wages. So businesses can plan. They know it's not going to be above 3.5 or 5%. And no matter how high inflation is, and then in the following years, subject to that cap, all the, the carryover would, would equalize those wages out. So it, it kind of helps both sides of the, of the spectrum, both businesses and employees. Yeah.
Anything else from anyone on council before we hear from the public? Councilmember Rhabak.
I, I agree that, as I said, I think that the $20 minimum should be implemented for, say, businesses of 25 or more people as soon as legally possible. And then go to $20 for all Half Moon Bay businesses, January 1st, 2025.
Okay, if there's nothing else from council, we'll hear from a member of the public. Is that it then?
So, direction's a little unclear. But what I heard is you're definitely interested in a little bit more granular data about the size of our businesses and how some of the different cutoff points would impact the numbers of people that, that would be benefited. So what I think we'll bring back in January then is maybe some different scenarios. We'll try to synthesize what we heard and bring back a few different scenarios with that data so you can see how some of the options would play out going forward. Is that okay?
Yeah, and I think particularly, we want to look at downtown Main Street and downtown businesses. And we want to look at the farm worker community, those two, two communities in particular.
Sounds good.
And, and, you know, one of the reasons to do that is you'll have some businesses, you know, chasing higher value products, which might mean cannabis. I don't think the cannabis industry is that great right now. But I mean, there are consequences of policy, right? So we want to understand how that affects agriculture. That's all. We want them to be paid well, but we want.
You know, it's complicated. There's different kinds of jobs on a farm, especially a cannabis farm. The highest paid workers are people, you know, harvest all the leaves. But boy, is that grueling work. I worked as a, basically doing migrant farm worker in another country for two months one summer. Getting up, 3:00 in the morning, getting eight hours in because it was hotter than hell by 11 o'clock. I have never since done work that difficult. And I don't think I would have lived past 35 if I had to do it every day, frankly. So that's the great irony, you know. Why wouldn't you just simply give all farm workers 20 bucks an hour in addition to fast food? Does it, do we take into account the difficulty and the life-limiting kind of work that people do? Not really.
I'm not saying don't do it, I'm saying understand it.
Yeah, yeah. But I'm just saying, there's a lot of things that, you know, don't come into the equation. And, but we all benefit from that really difficult labor of others. So, yeah, sometimes people just need to have some time in those folks' shoes to realize, you know, the value of it.
Okay, anyone else on council with anything else they need to add? Or can we adjourn this meeting? I adjourn this meeting.